I'm calling to order this meeting at 3:31. Regular meeting, agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Perez.
Yes, Mayor. Leading us in the invocation, if I can have everyone stand, is Pastor Kathy and Alud Garcia.
There'll be two prayers, she'll pray after me. Let's bow our heads. We thank you for this afternoon, thank you, Jesus, that you love our city, that you're into our city, that I ask that you would give us the wisdom, give the leaders, City Council, the wisdom and the knowledge, the understanding, to lead our city in a powerful and a productive way, Lord. I ask you, God, that you would move the reason, Father, that you established us, is that we would make a difference, that we would be able to influence other cities and how to really serve you. Apart from you, God, our city has nothing, we really can't succeed and prosper and grow. I ask for your presence over our city, over our leaders. I ask the Holy Spirit to come and give them the ability and the power and the wisdom to guide our city into this next generation, that we would truly, that Mission would be a city, that other cities would be able to look towards the Lord for growth and the wisdom and the ideas. I thank you, Holy Spirit, thank you for our leaders, thank you for our mayor and City Council, help them, Lord, keep them healthy. I ask for respect and honor, God, as they hold these positions. Father, I ask for our city to be guided by and through them, Lord. We love you, we bless you today, Jesus, for what you're doing in our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And Father, today, on this day, we celebrate Councilwoman Jessica's birthday. Father, we thank you for bringing her to this community. Father, today, we bless her. Lord, your word says that surely goodness and mercy will follow her all the days of her life. And so, Father, today, I pray that indeed goodness, your goodness, would overwhelm her this year. Your goodness in the form of protection, your goodness in the form of prosperity, your goodness in her life in the form of peace. And Father, I pray for your mercy, that she would be a woman that would extend mercy where mercy is needed. She would be one that would extend love where there is one that is heartbroken. She would extend kindness every chance that she gets. Lord, I just pray that all of these things would overtake her, goodness and mercy. And your presence in her life this year, we bless her today, and we thank you for Jessica and for all the council members and for our mayor, Dr. O'Cona, for all the employees here, the city of Mission. You are great, God, and you have blessed us so much. So today, we say thank you, Lord, for all that you have done, and thank you for Jessica. In the name of Jesus, I have prayed. Everybody said, "Amen." Amen.
Leading us in our pledge of allegiance is Kaylee Ganza and Luke Salasad, representing South Texas Juvenile Diabetes Association.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this week, the chamber is gearing up to put on a successful golf tournament this
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all want to come up for a picture?
Join us at proud for a...
Saturday at the Cimarron Country Club. And so, the part of the proceeds, we will be benefiting the Mission CISD Back-to-School Bash. So everything that we collect, we're going to buy back-to-school supplies for the Mission CISD students. We still have time to get teams. There are still opportunities for volunteers, so if anybody wants to join us, come on down. And then, we do have area for door prizes, so we can give it to our golfers. So it should be a great day. Next Tuesday, we do have a workshop that we're putting on for our members, and this workshop focuses on the power of meaning for effective leadership in the workplace. So it talks about the difference, the difference of the age individuals that are coming on. One of them is like the millennials, like what is it that they're looking for, what is it that they find meaning in the work that they do. So we're hosting on this workshop, which is going to be next Tuesday at the chamber headquarters, and we invite anybody who want to come and join us. We have also secured our keynote speaker for our Buenas Estables luncheon that we're putting on. It's going to be scheduled for April 11th, and our speaker is going to be our Hidalgo County, Richard Cortez. So we're excited for that, and we already have a table for our City Council, and let us know if you guys want to sponsor a table as well. And regarding tourism, I have great news. We have revamped and updated our Go Mission app. So it's up and running, and if you have the old version, go ahead and remove it and download a new version. So we're going to start really promoting the Go Mission app here in the city of Mission. And just to let you know a little bit about the Go Mission app, it's like a Groupon for the city of Mission. So we like to offer discounts in the city to our visitors and everything that's going. And we are also finalizing our billboard design that we have, and I've shared it with Randy, so we'll go ahead and see which ones we can select and move forward to, that we want to make sure it represents the city of Mission accurately. And that is all for today.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Regular meeting, agenda item number four, departmental reports. At this time, any of the councilperson wants to address any of the departmental reports that are in file before you?
May I move to approve the reports, Mr. President?
We have a motion to approve the report in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This includes approval of resolution number 1593, approval of ordinance number 4779, and approval of ordinance 4780. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, you're correct.
Thank you. Moving right along to 3.0, approvals and authorizations. 3.1, Ms. Lerma.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is to authorize the city of Mission to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Cleo Result Inc. to extend the participation of the 2019 AEP Texas Score City Smart Program. So this is a program by AEP Texas. It helps municipalities to identify energy-efficient opportunities in existing and in new businesses. They will provide monetary incentives when we do become energy-efficient. There is no cost to the city of Mission. We've been in this program, we've been involved in this program since 2017, I'm saying, 2007, and we have had a savings or an incentive, almost $60,000 to the city of Mission at no cost. So this is a great program for us to participate in. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve 3.1, and a second, further discussion by any of the councilpersons. No discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1 is approved. 3.2, Ms. Lerma.
3.2 is a reclassification of utility accounts for the fourth quarter of 2016 in the amount of $21,213. These amounts are for the three-month period as mentioned, October 2016 through December 2016. Staff and city manager recommend the reclassification of these utility accounts.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reclassification, 3.2. This is opening for further discussion from any of the city councilpersons.
Do you do this every year?
Yes, we do these. They're one year behind. We try to do them quarterly, and of course, we don't have a collection agency for these, but our staff does do everything to mitigate. When they do come in for new connections, the accounts are already tagged, and staff goes ahead and identifies them that way.
Any other questions or comments or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2 is approved. 3.3, Ms. Carrillo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I call, Mayor, we've got certain members who will be appointed today with us in the audience, so as I call their name, if they'd like to come up to the podium, please. These are board appointments for the Drainage Committee, the 2050 Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mission Economic Development Authority. Mayor's recommendation is the following. On the Drainage Committee, appoint Mr. Ned Sheets.
Mr. Sheet, do you want to come forward?
And Ms. Brenda Wilson.
Ms. Wilson.
And Mr. Ricardo Saldana.
Chief.
And Mayor O'Cona and Mayor Protem Garza will be serving in their respective positions. On the 2050 Committee, we had a vacancy on that committee, and the recommendation is to appoint Ms. Toni Chapa to that board. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will be appointing Ruben Arcaute to replace Mr. Ned Sheets, who is now serving on the Drainage Committee. And on the Mission Economic Development Authority, appoint Mr. Ruben Sanchez to replace Mr. Arcaute. Mr. Sanchez is not able to make it today, Mayor. To replace Mr. Arcaute, who is now going to be serving on the Planning and Zoning, and so staff and city manager recommend these recommendations by Mayor O'Cona.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, you're appointed specifically in the committees that were stated. You all want to come forward for a joint picture? Calling for 3.4, Mr. Teraz, I'm sorry, apologize.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I call, Mayor, we've got certain members who will be appointed today with us in the audience, so as I call their name, if they'd like to come up to the podium, please. These are board appointments for the Drainage Committee, the 2050 Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mission Economic Development Authority. Mayor's recommendation is the following. On the Drainage Committee, appoint Mr. Ned Sheets.
Mr. Sheet, do you want to come forward?
And Ms. Brenda Wilson.
Ms. Wilson.
And Mr. Ricardo Saldana.
Chief.
And Mayor O'Cona and Mayor Protem Garza will be serving in their respective positions. On the 2050 Committee, we had a vacancy on that committee, and the recommendation is to appoint Ms. Toni Chapa to that board. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will be appointing Ruben Arcaute to replace Mr. Ned Sheets, who is now serving on the Drainage Committee. And on the Mission Economic Development Authority, appoint Mr. Ruben Sanchez to replace Mr. Arcaute. Mr. Sanchez is not able to make it today, Mayor. To replace Mr. Arcaute, who is now going to be serving on the Planning and Zoning, and so staff and city manager recommend these recommendations by Mayor O'Cona.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
What's the resolution number?
Motion carries. This includes approval of resolution number 1593, approval of ordinance number 4779, and approval of ordinance 4780. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, you're correct.
Thank you. Moving right along to 3.0, approvals and authorizations. 3.1, Ms. Lerma.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is to authorize the city of Mission to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Cleo Result Inc. to extend the participation of the 2019 AEP Texas Score City Smart Program. So this is a program by AEP Texas. It helps municipalities to identify energy-efficient opportunities in existing and in new businesses. They will provide monetary incentives when we do become energy-efficient. There is no cost to the city of Mission. We've been in this program, we've been involved in this program since 2017, I'm saying, 2007, and we have had a savings or an incentive, almost $60,000 to the city of Mission at no cost. So this is a great program for us to participate in. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve 3.1, and a second, further discussion by any of the councilpersons. No discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1 is approved. 3.2, Ms. Lerma.
3.2 is a reclassification of utility accounts for the fourth quarter of 2016 in the amount of $21,213. These amounts are for the three-month period as mentioned, October 2016 through December 2016. Staff and city manager recommend the reclassification of these utility accounts.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reclassification, 3.2. This is opening for further discussion from any of the city councilpersons.
Do you do this every year?
Yes, we do these. They're one year behind. We try to do them quarterly, and of course, we don't have a collection agency for these, but our staff does do everything to mitigate. When they do come in for new connections, the accounts are already tagged, and staff goes ahead and identifies them that way.
Any other questions or comments or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2 is approved. 3.3, Ms. Carrillo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I call, Mayor, we've got certain members who will be appointed today with us in the audience, so as I call their name, if they'd like to come up to the podium, please. These are board appointments for the Drainage Committee, the 2050 Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mission Economic Development Authority. Mayor's recommendation is the following. On the Drainage Committee, appoint Mr. Ned Sheets.
Mr. Sheet, do you want to come forward?
And Ms. Brenda Wilson.
Ms. Wilson.
And Mr. Ricardo Saldana.
Chief.
And Mayor O'Cona and Mayor Protem Garza will be serving in their respective positions. On the 2050 Committee, we had a vacancy on that committee, and the recommendation is to appoint Ms. Toni Chapa to that board. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will be appointing Ruben Arcaute to replace Mr. Ned Sheets, who is now serving on the Drainage Committee. And on the Mission Economic Development Authority, appoint Mr. Ruben Sanchez to replace Mr. Arcaute. Mr. Sanchez is not able to make it today, Mayor. To replace Mr. Arcaute, who is now going to be serving on the Planning and Zoning, and so staff and city manager recommend these recommendations by Mayor O'Cona.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2 is approved. 3.6.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Item 3.6 is requesting Mission City Council adoption of a purchasing policy for the Mission Economic Development Corporation. The purchasing policy outlines purchasing procedures for the MDC and its staff. Document provides employees basic procedures for creating auditable records. The manual was created following many of the city's, the city missions processes very closely, but allows the flexibility for the MDC to function in a business manner that was intended by the state of Texas.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.7, Mr. Silva.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.7 is requesting Mission City Council adoption of a purchasing policy for the Mission Economic Development Corporation. The purchasing policy outlines purchasing procedures for the MDC and its staff. Document provides employees basic procedures for creating auditable records. The manual was created following many of the city's, the city missions processes very closely, but allows the flexibility for the MDC to function in a business manner that was intended by the state of Texas.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.8, Mr. Salinas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.7 is requesting Mission City Council adoption of a purchasing policy for the Mission Economic Development Corporation. The purchasing policy outlines purchasing procedures for the MDC and its staff. Document provides employees basic procedures for creating auditable records. The manual was created following many of the city's, the city missions processes very closely, but allows the flexibility for the MDC to function in a business manner that was intended by the state of Texas.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.7 is approved. 3.8, Mr. Salinas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you seeking authorization to execute second and final one-year renewal option for sludge management services for the Public Works Department. On April 2017, the city of Mission entered into contract with the Nali Water Solutions LLC for sludge management services for the wastewater treatment plant, pre-treatment plant, northwater plant, and southwater plant. Services are needed for the transport and disposal of sludge liquid in liquid and in solid form. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the second and final one-year renewal option at 3% increase in price. Attached, we have the renewal letter from the Nali Water Solutions LLC, and of course, we have the original bid tabulation from back in April 2017. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve 3.8. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is opening for further discussion. Any questions? Go ahead.
Question, Mayor. This is the final renewal option?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll go out for bids next year?
Yes, we need to solicit for bids, yes, sir.
Just make sure that you get that information to us before the contract actually ends.
Okay.
We usually request 60 to 90 days before the contract has expired.
Okay.
You know, if you could help us out with that, Mr. Salinas, I think that so we can be able to look at them and dot our eyes and cross our teeth.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.8 has been approved. 3.9, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members. Item 3.9 is the authorization to solicit bid for the rehabilitation of existing clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. Existing clarifier structure needs replacement of sludge rakes, center mixing well, and restoration of existing walkway. Staff, well, the estimated cost is $60,000, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is this the water plant?
That's the existing, the wastewater treatment plant built back in 2006.
But where's the location?
At the South Conway.
South Conway?
Yes, 906 South Conway, yes, sir.
Okay, not the one on Sixth Street.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.10, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members. Item 3.10 is the authorization of the city of Mission to enter into an agreement with Mr. Apollonia Chapa for planning and utility services. Authorization is being requested for the city of Mission to enter into agreement with Mr. Apollonia Chapa for plan review of new residential subdivisions, commercial development, and provide utility location services to the city. Mr. Chapa has 40 years of experience in the utility field and is uniquely qualified to locate water, sanitary sewer, and drainage lines within the city of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend to enter into agreement with Mr. Apollonia Chapa.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this as discussed in our workshop about four months ago during the summer, exactly what we talked about if Mr. Salinas, you can get with Randy, because I know we were under other city managers back then, and I don't know if that has been discussed, but we had discussed his contract already.
Okay, okay, I will. Mr. Perez.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, and I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Does this, is this the same as future use? No. This is, that could be a different workshop, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'll second on this motion.
Do I hear any more questions?
I don't remember what was discussed.
Ms. Ochoa, you want to refresh the council?
We discussed his scope of work and his salary.
Scope of work or salary, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So to increase it from this amount, is that what you mean?
He's been getting the same amount for the past, I don't know how many years.
Four years.
So I just wanted you to get together with the city manager back then to revise that.
Okay.
Thank you.
But are we going to give you authority to increase it, or what is it that we?
He has to bring it back.
So there will be?
Or city manager approve. The city manager has authority to approve.
I'm not sure we can authorize city manager to negotiate contract terms with Mr. Apollonia Chapa for the next year.
I would like to...
Mayor, I would like to...
Go ahead, Mr. Carrillo.
I was simply saying, you can authorize, if you wish, you can authorize the city manager.
Go ahead and change your motion, Ms. Ochoa.
I would like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate the contract to Mr. Apollonia Chapa.
Do I have a second?
Do you second?
I second, I'll second.
Any further final discussions? Are we okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.11, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members. Item 3.11 is the authorization to solicit bid for the reconstruction of existing lift station number 35 located at the southeast corner of US 83, Interstate 2, and Glasgow Road. Lift station reconstruction entails the construction of a wet well, installation of new pumps with fittings, and electrical control panel. The estimated cost is approximately 200, I mean, $320,000. Staff recommendation is, the staff and city manager recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids.
So move.
We have a motion to solicit for bids. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.11 is approved.
Thank you.
3.12, Mr. Azavil.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.12 is a variance request by T-Mobile Call Center to have parking lanes painted magenta pink instead of the mandated white, as indicated by the Mission Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110, 468, at 3711 San Gabriel. And we did receive a request from T-Mobile. They have a call center that has been at this location since 2004, a little bit over 15 years now, and they've employed over nearly 1,000 people at this call center. T-Mobile would like to paint the parking stripes in their magenta pink, and this is a rendering of what it would look like. Our code does allow for white striping. Over the years, we've also accepted yellow as a form of striping, and we also accept blue for the handicap spaces. So we are considering their request, and staff is recommending approval of the proposal to change the parking into pink, the striping. But we're also recommending that they keep the handicaps with the blue striping, and we're also recommending that they get consent from the Sheraland Plantation, because this is within the Sheraland Plantation, PUD. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.12 is now before you.
I also want to add, make sure that they keep the red striping for fires and the no parking part, you know, for safety reasons, also on that one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a second to approve. Opening for discussion, Mr. Martinez, I think you want to make a comment.
I'm looking at Mr. Plato's tie. Is that magenta right there?
As far as I got it.
Yes, sir. They actually have the same setup in all their national...
Yeah, that's going to be my question.
T-Mobile, they showed it to me when I did their route, you know, I was very pleased to see, had an opportunity to speak with over 100 employees that were there at one time, you know, and, you know, keeping a plant that has 900 to 1,000 employees at max peak, you know, that serves the whole state of Texas, not only the Rio Grande Valley, they serve the whole state of Texas for T-Mobile, you know. I think it was very impressive for me, you know, as far as that is concerned. I want to bring more of them, even if we have to paint the, you know, stripe the parking lot. for me, you know, as far as that is concerned. I want to bring more of them, even if we have to, to paint the, you know, stripe the parking lot, paint it, we have to.
Mayor, I believe this is the largest call center that T-Mobile has, the one here in Mission.
Yes. So, any final questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the variance is wrapped. 3.13, Mr. Azavil.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.13 is a request by Rodco Steel to have the city council consider allowing a 672 square foot digital sign at 808 East Interstate Highway 2. This is off the expressway next to the Juice Company, the World Citrus facility here off of the expressway on the south side. And we did review what is being proposed, and Rodco is proposing a 14 by 48 electronic display, similar to a billboard, if you will. A billboard measures 672 square feet, and the sign that they're proposing measures 672 square feet. It's 14 by 48. I did notice that there's a border on top that will, I guess, increase the size of the billboard by an additional four feet. So in actuality, it'll be an 18 by 48. And the surrender over here shows you what it would look like, and it, one of the concerns that I had with Rodco was that I was afraid that they were going to be advertising some off-premise advertisement, similar to that of a billboard. But in speaking to the gentleman representing both the company and the billboard, or the sign, they've told me that they're going to keep it strictly to on-premise advertising for the business. We have seen similar requests, and we have approved similar requests for Burt Ogden on Sherry and the expressway, and that sign has worked well since they put it up last year. Staff's recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.3, 3.13 is now before you.
I will have a question.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we open it for discussion, Ms. Nelson.
So then with the additional four feet, that makes it 864 feet, square feet?
It'll be an 18 by 48, yes.
Which is 864 feet. And so the request is for 672. So are we approving a 672 square foot sign, or an 864 square foot?
No, it's actually going to be, the part that's going to be, the digital display that's going to be changing is going to be 14 by 48. The part on top that says Rodco Steel is going to, is going to stay, it's not going to change, it's going to be, it's going to always say Rodco Steel.
So it is going to be a larger sign than?
It is going to be larger than 672, because I think you have to factor in the additional four feet.
I think that we would need to factor in, and since the request is for 672, we need to address the additional square footage.
I think we need to amend the request.
Can we, can we accept, do you want to put in an amendment for, amend the motion to amend?
I didn't make the motion. I didn't make the motion, did I?
I think it was Jessica. Looking at the bottom photo there, Jaime?
Mm-hmm. I just, I just know that, that there's a lot of traffic that goes over through the expressway, east and west, and bypasses Mission, you know, and I keep saying that we want to be able to, to have people, to be able to see as they go by, see what the, and take the advertisement that we have, so they can pull over and be able to exit, exit off the expressway and take time to shop in Mission. You know, if not, they're going to be doing McAllen, Harlingen, Brownsville, they keep on going, especially those from Rio Grande and La Rúa, and Laredo, Zapata, and all those, you know, we wanted to stop by. So, so to me, I, I would want for it to be as they presented it, you know, they have there. And they're also adding a, in addition to their, to their manufacturing plant, they're, and they're adding a significant increase in, which means that they'll turn around and employ more, more people to Mission also.
That's true. They're adding phase two of their, their commercial conflicts here.
In reference to the ER sign, is it bigger than that?
It's going to be bigger than that. The ER sign is 14 by 48. Your typical billboard size is 672 square feet, which is a 14 by 48. So this is going to be an additional four feet higher, or taller.
Mayor, I think if this is approved, we should probably bring it back with the corrected square footage on a consent agenda for the next meeting, because I don't think we can amend the material, part of the.
Mr., let me, let me forward it to legal.
I think if you're amending your request to the commission, you can do that. The safer way would be to make a decision if you want to bring it back for the consent agenda, would be the safest way to do it. But I think it's okay.
I agree with Paul to just bring it back.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that what the, your original motion, Ms. Ochoa?
Was the proper square footage?
I didn't make the motion.
You can cast me in the motion.
Mr. Martinez, would that be your original motion?
My motion? Then I'll resend my motion, and I'll resubmit one to where we, I guess, conditionally fix the square footage amount and bring it back on the consent agenda. Take no action.
Do I hear a second?
No action in a sense, but otherwise.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavil. 3.14, Ms. Mongia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.14 is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. This would be our second and final renewal option with them. It does come with a 31% decrease in rates, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
I approve to approve the 31% decrease in rates.
I second that.
Yes. Motion second to approve the 3.14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.15.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vela?
NG.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.15 is the tax collection report for the month of February 2019. For the month of February 2019, the 20, the total adjusted tax levy was $20,424,269.23, and the amount of collections as of February 28, 2019 was $18,417,950.28, which represents 90.18% of the total tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.15 approved. 3.16, Ms. Vela.
Item 3.16 is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending December 31, 2018, and interest earned for three months ending December 31, 2018. The total increases to investment balances for the period were $4,484,221.83, and the total decreases were $2,483,000, leaving a total of $12,913,140.49 in outstanding investments for the quarter ending December 31, 2018, and total interest earned for the three months was $46,858.15. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Is this open and prepared for discussion by any of the council persons?
What are the investments?
We have investments with Texpool and with multi-bank securities, which are agencies.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.17, Ms. Vela.
Item 3.17 is the approval of an attached budget amendment in the utility fund. This is revenues of $2,716,933 of Mission Redevelopment Authority reimbursements and expenses of $938,723 in new sewer lines and $1,778,210 in lift stations, which is to allocate for the South Conway Lift Station improvements and the Benson Palm Development sanitary sewer lines. The Mission Redevelopment Authority, through the reimbursement agreement, approved it by their board on February 26, 2019. This would include both engineering and construction costs.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.17, the budget amendment. Any questions by any of the council persons?
No questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.17 is approved, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
3.18, Ms. Mongolia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. 3.18 is approval of hardship case for Housing Assistance Program applicant at 413 North Canal Avenue. A structural fire occurred at 413 North Canal in 2008. Owner moved in with friends and cared for them until their passing and continues to reside there. Ten years have passed, and owner occupies, inquires and applies for housing assistance and would like to be considered as a hardship case, but was unable to obtain documentation due to length of time. Housing Assistance Program does not provide a maximum amount of time to consider hardship for natural disasters or accidental losses. After much research, Fire Department determines case to be hardship due to the extent of damage. On March 12, 2019, Citizens Advisory Committee considered and recommended approval for hardship case. Staff and city manager recommend approval on this.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any questions by any council person?
What's the extent of the, like, the hardship case? What exactly are we reviewing?
It was a complete loss. Yeah, the time, there was about 10 years there.
Total loss in the house.
Okay.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.18 is approved.
Thank you.
3.19, Belmonte.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you, item 3.19, Performance Services Inc. Investment Grade Audit Proposal. Staff received investment grade audit from Performance Services Inc. with guaranteed energy savings and design bill cost proposal outlining key scope items such as water meters with advanced metering infrastructure, LED lighting, optimized original sewer plant, and replacement of HVAC equipment approaching end of useful life. Attached is the investment grade audit for your review. Staff is seeking direction from council.
Mayor, I would like to approve, to accept the audit performance service, but not to do any work at this time. I don't think we are in a position to be investing almost $18 million. I believe, I did check with most of the staff, and you're not recommending this, correct? Not even the city manager.
We are actually just presenting the audit for your review at this time. We are in the process of collecting more data and more documentation. They have presented us with the, with the audit and with some information in relation to the audit and the data that was collected for the audit itself.
Are you going to go out for bids once you review it, or what are you going to do?
We would consider seeking a third-party reviewer to review the audit, so they, so they can give us feedback and the accuracy of the data.
My understanding also that it does have guaranteed performance as governed by the Texas statute. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mayor. Part of the requirement would be for them to put out the performance and payment bond for the contract itself.
And there will be no additional taxes, am I correct?
That is correct.
Because it's a self-funding project.
That is correct, 100%.
Yes, and bringing the smart meters and turning Mission green, am I correct?
That is correct, and not only the smart meters, but other infrastructure as well.
Yes, like the solar panels that Mr. Plato mentioned, the last time that they came before us.
That is correct, Mayor.
Am I correct?
Sorry.
My concern is that the last time this item was on the agenda, I thought the consensus was that we're going to have a workshop in reference to this item. We have not had a workshop. I don't think that all our answers, all our questions have been answered. Also, we just approved on item 3.1, an additional extension to participate with the AEP Texas Score City Smart Program. And I actually found my, my brochure from 2017, and I don't think that we've actually taken full advantage of this program by AEP. I think that if we take advantage of some items as incentives, energy performance benchmarking, energy master planning workshops, financing assistance, technical assistance, and communication expertise that is offered by AEP at no expense to the city, I think this is an option that we should explore before we commit to spending and going into a almost $15 million, $17 million debt. I don't believe that we're quite at that point where we're, where we should be getting into further debt at this point.
My understanding that it is a self-funding program, and it doesn't go into our, our debt portfolio for, for reigning purposes, am I correct, Ms. Vela?
That's the, can I just say something real quick? That's your understanding and my understanding, and that's the reason why I think we should have a workshop, is because we're not all on the same page. All our questions have not been answered, and I'm not understanding why we didn't have the workshop as we had agreed to in a previous meeting.
My concern, Mayor, is, I think this is a great idea. I think we should go green and solar and, you know, recycle, yes, of course. My concern is with the Water Development Board. Is this going to affect it in any way? Because, well, a couple of years ago, they kind of put us in a bad, bad bind with the transfer of whatever it was that happened that now we're not in compliance, so I don't know if Randy knows if this is going to hurt us.
So, so to answer your question, Mr. Martinez, we did speak to our financial advisor regarding this. It does, it does go into part of that as issuing debt to our utility system, as per our conversation this afternoon with our financial advisor regarding this issuance of 17.9 million.
I think we should do it, sir, but I think we got to see if it's not going to affect our compliance.
I'm, I'm still requesting a workshop, Mayor, at this point.
And that's fine.
And your request was that you were going to approve it pending further information? And, Mr. Plato, what was your motion?
I mean, we're going to, you need approval to accept the audit, correct?
Yes, that's correct, to accept the audit and possibly engage a third-party engineering firm to review the audit assessment and the data that was collected and to conduct the audit.
And can we add a workshop to that?
Of course.
I don't think it's necessary to accept the audit at this point. I think that can be done at a further, further date after the workshop. I mean, I don't see the necessity to move forward in accepting their, their audit at this point.
We, the audit has been presented to the city. It's at the discretion of the council and mayor at what time, at what point in time we'll accept the audit. We can possibly entertain the third-party review before we accept the audit itself.
That's a better idea.
That's a better idea.
Ms. Ochoa, do you have any take on this?
I would like to see if there's somebody here that can talk to us about it in the audience.
Do we have anybody from representing Performance Services Inc.?
Yes, we have Jonathan Blackwell, PSI, here in the audience. He's here.
Can you come forward, Mr. Blackwell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Do you want to address?
Yes, I just want a brief overview of your presentation, because I know that probably the staff has asked many questions from you, and you have a detailed summary here, summary here that our committee members have not access to.
Sure.
And so I'd like for you to go over it for us.
Of course. So the biggest part about our presentation, which is a brief overview of our very detailed investment grade audit, is that we've developed a self-funding project that complies with Local Government Code 302.001, which states that a local government can implement what's called a performance contract, as long as the entity, the ESCO, that's Performance Services in this case, will guarantee the financial outcome. And what we've been able to identify in the past four months.
And you're doing that, right? You're guaranteeing it?
Yes, that is correct. So we are, we are able to guarantee the increases in the efficiencies with the implementation of new 21st century water metering technologies, giving you guys real-time data to communicate with your residents, so they can actually have the transparency to see what's happening with their water bill in real time, just as much as the city staff can. We're going to implement solar to utilize the best conductor in the sky, put in new LEDs. Even in this room, you're using 60% more energy than you have to. So we're going to go throughout the city and make sure that you're using the right amount of energy, but with better light output. We're also going to be able to structure this through, there's many options, but in one way, we can utilize a tax exemplies purchase. way, we can utilize a tax exempt lease purchase, where we can defer the payments for two full years, even the interest. So, that's kinda like buying a brand-new car and not having to make a payment on it for two years, and by the time your payment's due, you've recognized all the savings you've accumulated over the two years. But the whole premise of the guaranteed savings performance contract is that we guarantee the financial outcome, that if you guys miss the savings that we're guaranteeing, we are there to cut a check for the difference. And from my understanding, the city of Mission has done a lot of projects in your hundred years of being in existence, but never once has a contractor stated, "We will guarantee the financial outcome of this project to ensure that you are whole if the savings are not achieved."
I have a question. What other cities in Texas have you, do you have a contract with? And how long have you had more than a year of experience in these contracts? Or are they older than a year?
Yes, we have. We have projects that are not just performance contracts, but turnkey projects that are just water meter projects, but locally.
And they're all over a year? So, have you actually have measured savings?
Yes, we do.
History of more than a year?
Yes, we can provide measured savings to you.
Have you provided those numbers to the city?
Those were actually requested today, as I was getting off my flight and...
Okay, so then, again, there's some unanswered questions that haven't been responded to, and, you know, I really would like to take the opportunity and just have a workshop and have a full discussion about these numbers. If we, I mean, we're still lacking information. I don't think that we're ready to go forward.
We'll be happy to provide that information. We've been around for twenty-one years. We've done four hundred-plus performance contracts, be it local governments, K through twelve schools, universities, counties. We'll be happy to share that track record.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
I would welcome that information.
Can you come back in a week and give us a little workshop?
A week?
Or whatever.
I'm thinking of my schedule.
Or whenever, you know what I mean?
I could be back as soon as you guys need me to. Yes, sir.
We can discuss the date later.
Well, can he provide all the information to our staff first? You'll review it, and then we can have a workshop? Isn't that the way it's supposed to?
We'll be more than happy to entertain the information and analyze it ourselves and then prepare for the workshop.
And in all fairness, prepare the questions in writing, please, because it's very hard, like you just mentioned, to get off the airplane and get a question and be ready to prepare to be answered, you know? So, just, if you could, prepare those questions for all fairness, for everybody that's here. And the same thing with Ms. Garcia has questions about it, you know? If you could forward it to them, so they can...
Yes, absolutely.
Because I don't, you know, I don't want for him to be every ten minutes that somebody's gonna ask another question, another question, another question, you know, as far as that is concerned, you know?
I appreciate that, Mayor, but also in their defense, and everyone, this is a big undertaking. But rest assured, we are a very financially solid organization, and we are very willing to stand behind this project year after year to ensure that it meets the financial outcome that we stated it will in the investment-grade audit that we have completed for you guys.
It would sit better if we can give as much information to the public as possible.
Ms. Andy, do you know what is the network of the company, or no?
Not at this time, do you know?
We're privately held. But I can...
They're publicly held.
Privately held.
Privately held.
Okay, so, you had a motion, Mr. Plata?
Just take no action.
No action.
No action, and set the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're not gonna take any actions, so, thank you for Mr....
Thank you, Mayor.
But get the questions ready for him and for us, everybody.
Yes, sir.
And then, once you get them answered, get together with the city manager, and we'll set the workshop.
Mayor, I have a question. In this workshop that we, and it's true, Norrie had requests, we had requested a workshop a while back, and we never got to that. Is there any way, I guess I should be asking Mr. Galligan, that we can invite the public to come there? Because we're part of transparency.
Yeah.
Okay, in keeping with transparency, I invite everybody here interested in this subject to come in and ask for questions, because this leadership that you see up here, we're transparent as can be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Four point oh, we have no unfinished business. Five point oh, city manager's comment. Five point one.
No comments at this time.
Five point two, Mayor's comment. I just wanna thank our sanitation department for the fine pickup of all the major items that we've had in our city. You know, our people have been very relieved that now they have elbow space to get some more. So, they wanted to see if we could, they wanted to see if we could do it every quarter. You know, I don't know if it's feasible or not, you know, but because they wanna get some more and then put it out again for us to pick up. And also, I don't know if, I know that we're working together with the Rio Grande Valley Council about tires pickup also. So, we need to get that campaign going and put it out to the public with plenty of time to be able to clean, because keep in mind, I know a healthy public has called me several times about tires and water, you know, creating larva places for breeding mosquitoes, as far as that is concerned. So, it's an indirect way of us taking care of the health of our community by just picking them up. Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mayor. I do wanna share with the public that we are taking over the commercial garbage pickup starting next week. We, staff has been working diligently to replace all of commercial businesses with our own containers, and so we started the process already, have been started for some time now, and the initial start date will be Monday, April the first, and we'll be ready to pick up any and all commercial accounts that we have in our city.
Yes, and continuing the Mayor's comment, I do wanna let the public know that we'll be traveling on Tuesday afternoon to Laredo, Texas, and on Wednesday, we are coming before the United States-Mexico International, what is it, the Border Committee? And we're gonna be doing a fifteen-minute presentation on the Mission Maredo Bridge, because it has not been placed on the International Action Plan. And obviously, that if we're going to do that, it needs to be placed, you know, and the State Department from the United States, as well as from Mexico, will be there, and they're gonna provide us direct feedback on the Mission Maredo Reynosa Bridge, as far as that is concerned. As FYI information, I also wanna thank the chief, Dominguez, for the escort and the active participation of that veteran. I've had a lot of positive feedback on that, chief. So, thank you for, and the Fire Department, worst chief, Sanchez. Also, we wanna thank you and all the city staff that actively participated, and especially the people that took the time to go out there and accompany and unaccompanied. The message across from Mission is very clear, that any veteran that goes out to fight or just provide services for our community, for the United States of America, if you're alone out there and you can get buried in Mission, we will accompany you. And that's my hats off to all veterans that are out there alive right now, and thank you for your service, as far as that is concerned. Without further ado, five point three, city council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Martinez to my left.
Thank you, Mayor.
Martinez.
Just two quick things. An update on the fire appeal. We're gonna be up at TML April twenty-seventh. We're gonna address it. I don't know what's gonna happen. It's really up to them, but, you know, we're gonna support our firefighters in terms of that cancer issue. So, April twenty-seventh is the date up in Tyler, Texas. It'll be me, the mayor, and the city manager, and we'll let you know where that goes. My second and final thing is, opening day is Thursday. The Astros play at three.
Okay, Ms. Garcia?
Just in reference to the meeting that's gonna be held on the twenty-seventh of April at the TML meeting, I would like to have a resolution brought to us at the council level in support of our employee, and if we could have that maybe at our next meeting.
If it's okay, I would like to put it in the executive session for the next city council meeting, for a briefing, for legal to provide us what, that was my plan, was to put it, and we still have another city council meeting, to approve the resolution if the council, if our legal advice, you know, because we're developing a legal action plan on behalf of, representing the city, you know, because of the sensitivity of the case.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. My other thing was, I was gonna wish Jessica a happy birthday, but I got beat.
Thank you, love you, Norrie.
Happy birthday, Jessica.
Yes.
No comments, Mayor. Happy birthday, Jessica.
Thank you.
This birthday girl, you wanna say some comments?
Yes, I do.
Besides, happy birthday.
I was sad that this past week I did not come to the canine ceremony, so I wanted to mention that, the memorial service that we held here. So, sorry for that. When I first decided to run for city council, it was to be the voice for all constituents of Mission, not just for a selected few, and to be accessible and transparent to them. Today, as I start my forty-fifth year of life, yes, believe it, forty-five years, none of that has changed. Nothing has or will stop me from my purpose to unite the city of Mission. We will not be a city divided. I pray that together we rise up and stay focused on moving Mission forward, united as a community. My birthday wish is that we all do something kind for others. Kindness is all that matters in this life. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless Mission.
Thank you. Moving right along, six point zero, executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section five five one point zero zero one, I will entertain a motion for six point one A and B.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are moving into executive session, and we'll be coming out as soon as we take care of business. More to reconvene?
Yes.
Second?
Ready to go. Ready to go. Let me recognize you first. Mr. Plata, you are recognized. With the agenda, Ms. Choa, second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reconvene, is Mr. Martinez here, or is he, is he, Mr. Martinez around?
Nope, he left.
Okay, okay. I just wanted for the record that he is not on his position. Okay, we'll start with the first item, six point one A. Legal, will you please brief us on the direction that we're going to go with six point one A?
What would be appropriate would be a motion to grant the city manager authority up to ten thousand dollars to negotiate, or ten thousand dollars negotiation authority for property acquisitions on the Taylor Road project.
Do I hear a motion? I'm more to approve. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Six point one A is approved. Six point one B.
Be a motion to authorize the city manager and the mayor to, for the purchase of land as described.
As discussed in the executive session?
Yes.
I'm more to approve. We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Six point one B is approved. Six point two A?
No action.
No action. Six point two B?
No action.
No action. Six point two C?
Would be an authorization to grant the mayor and the city manager the authority to negotiate a resolution in that case.
Do I hear a motion? I'm more to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, as discussed in the executive session, am I correct? As discussed in the best interest of the city. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Six point two D?
No action.
No action.
No action.
But we are setting a workshop. The workshop date, Mr. Perez, was for the reorganization of our city.
April the fourth.
April the fourth at five thirty PM. So, Ms. Carrillo? Okay. Six point three, personnel matters, letter A, and my understanding that, correct me if I'm wrong, there will be no action except a, on Thursday?
Friday.
On Friday, a posting, a posting on Friday for twelve noon for an extension of one applicant to be reviewed in executive session.
For the city attorney position.
For the city attorney position.
That's this Friday.
Is a motion required for this legal? Or just?
Seven.
No, no. Yes. Okay. I do wanna also, executive session also, that we, personnel also, I just wanna call back, let me call back, agenda item five point two, Mayor's comment. Just call back on five point two, Mayor's comment for the record. I do wanna advise that we, the public, that we're going to have a couple more workshops. Mr. Perez, could you make the announcements of the workshops that we're gonna have?
Yes, Mayor. So, April the first, we will have a feature land use map workshop with our planning department. April the second at five thirty. April the second, a preliminary budget workshop at five thirty, and April the fourth, an organizational chart workshop at five thirty.
Okay. Any questions, council?
No, sir. We'll have a long week.
Okay. On the same five point two agenda item, do we have Tony Chapa in the audience by any chance? If you could please rise and be identified for the record, since you missed you.
Picture.
You know, and we would like for you to come forward with a picture with the council.
Yes.
Okay?
Right now, after the meeting.
After the meeting, after the meeting, okay? For the record, thank you. Thank you for serving the community in that capacity. Without further ado, I'll go to agenda item seven point oh. Do I hear a motion? I'm more to adjourn.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, non-debatable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Have a good evening, everybody.